The special meeting for April twenty eighth at three o'clock is called to order. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Angie Reyes English to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Thank you, Mayor. If you could all please stand and face the flag. Ready again. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Alright, so all members are present for this meeting. Madam Clerk, please read the guidelines for communications.
Pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five four point three, the public shall directly address the legislative body concerning items that have been described in the notice of special meeting.
Okay, is there any communications?
No, we didn't receive any.
Okay. Item four is the review of all responses received by the City of Hawthorne to the request for proposal and qualifications for the cannabis program implementation and related consulting services. This was an RFP that was issued by the City Council for the council's eventual selection of the top responses for interviews at a date to be determined by the City Council. So this is essentially, it sounds like it's a review. Okay, the floor is open to my council colleagues. Whoever wants to open this up, go ahead. Anybody? Councilmember Montero, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. Actually, what I want to do, I just want to make a statement because of the, one of the comments from last night about the cannabis program. Actually, you know, the reason that we are here today is because the constituent, the City of Hawthorne, have voted almost like twice. The first time they vote about fifty-eight percent legalized marijuana in California. They vote fifty-eight percent. And on November third, twenty twenty, we put on the ballot, imagine that could give us the ability to tax five percent on the cannabis programs on top of the sales tax. So, and the people vote, sixty-one percent voted unanimously. So we have a mandate because we cannot sit down and wait for all these cannabis programs to open around us like the non-incorporated area, just a few meters or block from our city. And most of the cities in South Bay are considering to do the same programs. So, and there is money to be made, especially grants from the state of California. And eventually, we know that the federal government is looking into legalized marijuana. So, we cannot just wait and see all this money, revenue goes out of our city. And this money that we're going to generate from this cannabis program can go to programs to youth develop in our community, to our police department for security and safety, and maybe incentive for the new office to stay in Hawthorne. So, all these revenues, we have to capitalize on them. Not to let them, you know, go back on the back doors and not come back to us. So we need to make sure that, as you know, our economy, our general fund, depend on sales tax, TOT, and property tax. So we need to generate some other sources of revenue for our general fund. And this is a way that we can generate some potential revenue for our citizens. So we will not be able to struggle financially in the future. Because we, like I said, there is money to be made, there is grant from the state of California to grab. So, and this money is going to go benefit to our community. Like I said, to youth programs, to our police department, to our safety programs. So all of that money is going to be well spent, and it's not for us, it's not for individual council. So it's for the community. So, thank you.
Councilmember Montero, thank you. I would like to add my personal comments before we proceed as well. And as Councilmember Monteros has stated, the, there was, there were elections that took place, I think possibly two, is that correct? Two elections?
Yeah.
In which the, the majority of the
Residents.
The state's residents. And apparently, in the City of Hawthorne, there was sixty percent to forty percent, possibly, what was it?
Fifty-eight percent voted yes, legalized marijuana.
Let's be exact, because then somebody will quote.
Now, it was fifty-eight percent. And then in November twenty twenty, sixty-one percent.
So those are, those are the facts, and no matter what our personal feelings or ideas on the matter are, including my own, the voters approved it. And so what our duty is at this point is that we provide the good regulation to make sure that we have the guidelines in which these groups that might want to set up shop here in the City of Hawthorne have the rules that they need to follow. Why? In order to, you know, make sure that they operate safely, ethically, correctly, and that, and that our community is protected. We get to say where they go. You know, they don't, we don't, what we don't want is for the state eventually to come in and regulate for us. Because the state may be, I don't want to use the word liberal, but they might be, they just might be too free-handed in giving away, you know, permissions and permits, and so then we lose control. This is our way of keeping local control on the matter, protecting the residents, making sure these guys contribute, and that they pay their fair share of taxes as they're supposed to. And protect our children, making sure that, you know, just like we don't want any more liquor stores. We want to make sure that, you know, these people, if they are allowed to move in, that they go in specific areas, that they pay certain taxes, and what's favorable to us, and we, the community, know better. So, that's what this is really all about. I appreciate you guys letting me speak. Mayor Protem Valentine, your turn?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I, I am, as you know, I was opposed to having marijuana in the City of Hawthorne because I do believe that it is a negative influence on our youth. Regardless of whether whether it's legal in the rest of the state, I believe it's a negative influence on our youth. And I, I continue to believe that. However, I agree with the mayor. If we're going to do it, and it looks as if, you know, this is something that the state wants, and a lot of cities want it, Hawthorne would be left out if we don't participate. So, we need to have a responsible cannabis program. What I think is, as I, as I look through these, these proposals, I think they were lacking in certain areas, all of them. First of all, if, if we're going to have a program, there needs to be plans to engage with community leaders in the City of Hawthorne. Community leaders need to talk about the sensitivity of the people, where the buffers are going to be, where, where the, where the, where, where they should be placed, you know, whatever distribution area, whichever, if we're going to have retail or distribution, whatever we're going to have, where it's going to be placed in relation to schools, so that it's not near schools, it's not near youth centers. And, and, and there need to be a buffer with the residents, because I'm, the residents, I'm certain, do not want marijuana facilities in their, in their, near their residences. So there needs to be plans to engage with community leaders concerning buffer zones. There needs to be a plan to train staff. Because once the, once the, the consultants are gone, staff needs to be experts at being able to deal with all aspects of cannabis. Once the consultants are gone, and staff is not trained, then staff will have to be continually reaching out to more consultants, costing us more money because they won't be trained, and they still won't know how to implement the programs. So there needs to be a plan to train staff. I didn't see that in the proposals. There needs to be a mandatory education program for the community. Workshops, training, giving people information about cannabis, the effects on the body, the, the what they can expect in the future. And so I thought that the, I thought that there was, the, the, the proposals, as they were submitted, did not have these elements in it. And so I, my feeling is that I'm not certain whether our, our, there were, there were, there were maybe one or two proposals that had some of these elements in it. But my, my suggestion would be that we change the RFP to go back and ask for these specific elements. And in other words, have the RFP resubmitted so that, so that these things can be put in it, because I think that's very important. Especially, I mean, all of her, everything I, I mentioned, I think is important. Engaging with community leaders, training staff, mandatory education for the community. And I didn't see that in most of the proposals. I saw some elements in some proposals and some in others. I didn't see those specific elements in all the proposals. So I'd like to suggest that we go back and reissue the RFP to include those elements.
To the chair.
I'm next, Miss, my hand was up.
Mayor Protem, are you, are you finished? Okay, Mayor, okay, so, are you finished, Mayor Protem? Okay, Councilmember Montero?
I am finished, thank you.
So I'm going to put Councilmember Montero, then Ms. English, Reyes English, and then Councilmember Reyes English, and Councilmember Patterson.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, welcome, Mr. Robert Kim, our interim city attorney, welcome. Yes, definitely that we want to create a program that is going to be outstanding, transparent, and also that is going to accommodate all the needs of our community. And that is where, when we select a consultant and to work with the staff, they're going to create all the programs that it's needed, like outreach, community involvement, staff development. Because when I'm, when I'm reading some of these proposals, they have scope of service, include community outreach, staff development, staff training, on-job training, employee development training, continued education, mentoring programs, social equity programs. So some of these proposals has all those elements that, that talks about. They talks about ordinance and resolution, preparation, permit fee evaluation, develop agreement, review and oversight, zoning verification, permit application developer, business license application review and screening, community outreach, SEQA, staff development and training, general project management service, preliminary building evaluation, building plan check, compliance and enforcement support, real estate availability survey, social equity program development, social equity operation assistant, that is later subbing. So some of these proposals have all those components that, that it's talking about. And the other thing that you, some of you remember that we told our planning department to have a not a specific RFP. We said we wanted that RFP to be open, so we can see what this consultant was going to bring up on the table. So, so the RFP, some of them, you know, respond to the RFP, the way we put it out there, and we wanted that RFP to be flexible. We didn't want to dictate, because we wanted to see what expertise does these consultants firms have in order for us to select the best one that would create the cannabis program with our staff, with our stakeholders, and ourselves. So I think some of the proposals has that, those elements, so I think that we don't need to put another RFP up. I'm done, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Reyes English?
Thank you, Mayor. The cannabis program that ultimately the City of Hawthorne would like to implement is one, again, that needs to be a collective and well-thought and included program with all elements. And so with regards to community outreach, community benefits, equitable business, that's, that's what we're hoping for. But more importantly, the consultants that submitted a proposal, I think they understand that this is the first time that the City of Hawthorne is looking to do a cannabis program. And I think the RFPs that they submitted speaks to their experience and/or not. Some of the consultants don't have a good website that provides more information, let alone their team. They also don't have as much cannabis work. I, I've, I see maybe three at this point that are potential. My time here in the City of Los Angeles, as everybody knows, the City of Los Angeles has a cannabis department. And the City of Los Angeles has, you know, regulators and has income from cannabis businesses in the City of Los Angeles. It's a very big city, over ten, ten million people, fifteen council districts with over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people in each district. For our city, we're, we're small, and we know that ultimately, we, we want to be able to provide a service, but cannabis also is, could be medically driven, and that is, you know, providing cannabis products for those that are suffering from ailments. So, I don't think we're talking here about so much, you know, recreation. I think what we're trying to do is just to assure that we have a safe program. We ultimately don't want it near schools, which that's a given. All these other businesses in Los Angeles, they have the same rule of thumb. Not near schools, not near anything having to do with daycares. So it's important that, you know, we follow similar models that are already out there, and, you know, not really having to duplicate. The only difference is, is that we're a smaller city, so that benefits us in a sense that it's not going to be large in size, but it's going to be something that we could regulate and ultimately weed out any bad actors. We already received complaints with regards to the cannabis organizations that are in the county that butt our city, and we're aware of that. However, that's the county. Currently, the City of Los Angeles does not have any, or excuse me, the City of Hawthorne does not have any cannabis businesses, and that's what we're looking at today, is ultimately to inquire on a consultant that could provide us leadership and provide us expertise and knowledge on what that would look like for us, the City of Hawthorne, and ultimately, what that revenue source would be, forecasting for years to come. But this isn't something that we're trying to make multiple, multiple business or locations, but we would like to look at the potentials of, of including everything to see what, what that would look like for us in revenue sources, so I think this is something that we need to review thoroughly, take into account everything that the consultants have put in their packets, and, and ultimately vet out those that we feel that are not qualified. And we have the opportunity to shape exactly what it is we'd like for Hawthorne, so I think ultimately, when we make the selection, there could be additional requests of the consultant to, to assure that Councilmember Valentine's concerns are addressed, everyone else's concerns are addressed. But thi- this isn't something that I'm looking to expedite or speed up for any reason. I think it needs to be thoroughly done, and we should have staff that go out possibly on their own as we open up businesses and maybe research what it looks like. And there's, again, there's a lot of them, there's a lot, and they look like stores, they look like a store that you would go to and frequent, and kind of, kind of in a sense, educate yourself on it. I was naive to the fact that it ultimately looks like a grocery store that you go and you shop and you pick what you want. And it's being regulated. And I think that's something that the city would ultimately want to see staff take the initiative to understand and see what they look like and what ultimately we should include and/or not, because all of this is important to the makeup of a good cannabis program.
Okay, Councilmember Patterson?
Oh yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I was in the impression that today we're going to be discussing the different proposals. Which I hope that we can spend some time to do that. I'm not by any means an expert when it comes to cannabis. But I, I think that before we say that our applicants aren't qualified, we should definitely dive into their proposals, even have individual conversation, not, have them present individually, one by one, to the council, also ask some questions and understand their background and their expertise. After kind of interviewing, it's not like we have a lot of applicants, we have, we have eight. After interviewing those eight, as a council, decide that one or more are qualified to serve our needs, or maybe decide that none are, and if that's the case, then we'll have to open up the proposal again. One thing I would like to say is, the more that we ask of this consultant, the more expensive it's going to be to the city. And I bring that up because I, we all know that this is not something new, we're not pioneering anything here with this conversation. We'll be looking to adopt an ordinance that's similar to dozens and dozens of other cities. And so I don't really feel that it will be necessary to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on some big cannabis ordinance rollout and, and whatever, when we can just kind of copy what already exists, duplicate what already exists, and put that into place. Not saying that we won't need any ongoing support or any ongoing expertise. But I don't think we need to make this more complicated than it is. One of the great things about why the way our government's set up, the council has the ability at any time to make new rules, change rules, hire consultants, fire consultants, and seek the support that we need based upon our needs at that time. So I would hope that we're going to move forward with what we had said we're going to do, which is review all of the proposals in detail, perhaps ask each of the applicants to, to present to us, so we can ask them questions, get to know them, and then make a decision based upon that information.
Yeah, can I, can I make a couple of comments first? Councilmember, I guess everybody, we already did a round.
My hand is there.
Okay, you're, you're next, brother. So yes, I'm listening to what all my colleagues are saying, and all of, there's valid concerns coming from the different ends here. And I do agree with Councilmember Reyes English and Councilwoman and Mayor Protem Valentine. We don't want to make a hasty decision, but at the same time, we just need to be honest with how we put out the, and, and in some ways, I'd like to address Councilmember Montero. How did we, how general of a scope, of a scope of the RFP did we put out? So some of these people, it's correct, maybe this is an opportunity to weed some of these people out, because maybe they know best how to present themselves and all the different areas to hit. When, when presenting a quote or a proposal, but then what if there are some applicants out there that felt that they needed to keep it at a general level without actually going into a more specific level of qualifications? And it kind of, the process ends up X-ing them out, and when they might be the better candidate, so I'm willing to maybe take a look at these, go through them, and just like I said, conclude, maybe none of them are good. Um I'm willing to maybe take a look at these, um go through them and just like I said, conclude, maybe none of them are good. Maybe there are good ones and uh so then ultimately we could decide if maybe we need to refine our uh. Request for proposal, our RFP, but um. I think uh I'm open to all suggestions. Uh oh, and then the other thing, I'm I I I'm listening to what everybody's saying and I can appreciate what everybody's saying, okay? We don't wanna wait too long, but then we don't wanna be hasty as well. But then the other thing also is, we do have models out there. I do agree, but these models aren't necessarily working out there. Um you know, if we're gonna look to maybe the city of LA or some of these other cities that are implementing, there's aspects of the marijuana rollout. Marijuana dispensary rollout that aren't working in those areas. And so I don't think we need, we can just use those as a a benchmark necessarily. Uh we can maybe reinvent what is good for Hawthorne, right? With regards to what we need uh to put as safeguards, et cetera, so. I'm listening to what everybody's saying. I haven't concluded as to which direction. I I feel personally I would like to propose, but um. Uh councilman Montero, can you go ahead?
Thank you. Um. Yeah, nobody's saying that we we need to rush this process, okay? So we're gonna do it right. We're gonna do, we are, we're gonna take all the time that is necessary. To come up with an outstanding and a good program program that will benefit the city of Hawthorne. Uh just to comment about, there is already laws coming from the state of California. That the marijuana dispenser cannot be close to a school. They have to be a thousand feet away from the school. Okay, so there is already laws that that we need to follow, so, okay? Now, like you said, today we were supposed to come up with some finalists. I already eliminate four of them. I have four that I'm contemplating that I I would like to. The next step to call them in for interviews. But before we got there, and and when you read these proposals, okay, because remember, you have to look at your RFP. And then assess each proposal. They just just let me say, I'm I'm not trying to brag, but I have been proposal review for this, for the. Uh United States federal government, Department of Education, Health and Human Service, the state of California. Department of Education and Health and Human Service, I have read thousands of proposals and scored them. Basis on the RFP that was submitted. So I have traveled to Washington DC, to Sacramento, to be panel. To s- score and and submit proposal for approval basis on the RFP. So that is what you need to look. You need to look at your RFP and then see uh each applicant, how they respond to to it. But before we starting the process of elimination, I want to ask uh our planning director Greg. To talk about, because I'm pretty sure he read all these eight proposals and tell us. In effect, do do they respond to the RFP accordingly that we put out?
Um council member Montero?
I want Greg to respond, please.
Yes, but councilman Montero, is are you asking him to maybe uh point out the, point out the main points of the RFP as well?
No, I I just wanted him to to tell to tell us if this eight proposal did meet the guidelines of what we put out the uh request for the proposal.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you.
Um, good afternoon, council mayor. Um. Unfortunately, I I didn't receive direction to review them uh thoroughly. Um I was instructed that the council would be reviewing and making that decision. Um I can tell you that the RFP was devised in a very broad manner. Um to demonstrate their experience and to let them show off. Uh what they uh had the experience in doing. Um we provided some basic guidance uh for them. Uh and kinda provided some some specifics that they should include to to help the council make their decision. Um but we left it open uh for them to add upon that. Uh to to again, give them the opportunity to demonstrate their expertise and experience and what they've done with others. Um I, you know, I did glance over them. Um I I I I would agree that there were about half. That I thought uh met the requirements of the RFP, but. Um you know, my guidance in the RFP was strictly that guidance to the council uh in making their decisions, so. Uh unfortunately, I didn't, I wasn't expected or anticipated to to help uh the council make their decision. I apologize for that.
Alright, I thank you, Greg. So so basically, uh the other things, you know, when when you read the 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 uh. The proposal, you know, you have to give, for example, I have one proposal here that has uh. Have done cannabis program in six cities, okay, across the California. Another one, five, another one, three. So there is some experience of these people that have done six different cities, five different cities. Uh like uh Mr. David Perrin said, there there is models out there that we can, we can model, but like I say, Hawthorne is unique. So we wanna create a program that is going to be outstanding, that is not gonna be no. No later on, no litigation, no lawsuits, no nothing. So we want to make sure we do, we wanna do it right. And we wanna do it in low, in 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 places that maybe is industrial, maybe it's a it's a overlay. So all these things is gonna come down the road. Right now, we just have to evaluate the proposal and see. Which which are gonna be the finalists and then call them for a a interview. They can present their case and we can ask question. Uh but like I said, you know, I already have my four finalists. I eliminate four, so. I'm done for now, Mr.
Well, thank you very much. Anybody else? Uh co- uh mayor Pro Tem Valentine?
Well, I would like to, I I I really do um want to have the guidance of the planning director. So I would like to um have this um. I I would like to have this uh postponed, this review postponed until the planning director has had a chance to review them. And and I do want guidance from the planning director as to whether or not the uh the proposals met the requirements of the RFP.
Can we give them a day or two and then we just come back in a day or two? I mean, like, I don't wanna pose if.
To the chair.
You know, that's 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 what I would say. I mean, if we're gonna do this a day or two and then just or whatever, but not like no drastic long time. Alright, go ahead, council member Reyes.
Thank you. Um. I I made I made a comment on, you know, uh researching some of the uh. Well, not some, but all the eight proposals and um I identified. Three. Um. A lot of it just had to do by, you know, following, following uh their company, their 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 brand, right? Um and researching who they are and following the work that they've done in around um. Implementation of a cannabis program. So I have, I have about three, I would say three. Whether or not um we give it a few more days so that. The planning department could review that. Um I don't necessarily think it's gonna change my. My selection unless they're gonna offer something that's gonna be, you know. Valuable, whether it hurts them or not, the consultant. Um what more uh information is is sought out from them. Um. So the I I I it doesn't matter to me if we hold out another two, three days or whatever so that. They could come up to speed in the planning department, but um I've already kind of made a selection process based off of my research.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. Um council member Montero and then mayor Pro Tem Valentine?
No, I I I didn't take my hand down. That's okay. I don't have anything else to say.
Okay, council member Montero?
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um well. What I would suggest is 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 because, you know, we gave the planning department a directive. To put a broad RFP and then for us, the five councils to review those out of. Those proposal and then for us to select. So now we we de- we trying to deviate from our process. And I don't wanna ask to deviate from the process. So I think we should select the finalists and then. Uh the planning department can read those finalists for for three or four. Uh before the next meeting that we will have to interview the candidates. Then the planning department already have, will give us their overview of those finalists. So so then when we interview them, then we know exactly what to expect and not to expect. Uh and because remember, the planning department is also, I don't I don't know if the if Greg or Art. Have expertise on cannabis program, so they they only have expertise on zoning and land use. And we not there yet. We basically, right now, we selecting a consultant based on the experience of 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 select, of making, create programs. In the cities. So it's no, we're not talking about zoning, we're not talking about uh sequer. Uh basically, uh the planning the department, uh yes, can give us an input on these on these finalists. For be to help us interview those candidates, but but I don't see uh that the planning department right now at this moment. To have an effective decision because we not talking about zoning yet. Or sequer, or environmental, or safety, how we're gonna create these programs, okay? So I'm saying that let's stick what we said we want to do and 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 select the finalists. Let the planning director read them and with the help of Art. And then we'll set, we 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 they will come back to us uh before we interview the candidates. And then they'll give us the 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 perspective, the insight, and then we'll go for the final interview of the of the selected finalists.
Anybody would like to say any final words? Oh, mayor Pro Tem Valentine, I just wanna, are you okay with that at this point or do you still have any points to make on that?
I don't have any points to make. I've already said what I wanted to say.
Okay. So um how does the council feel about going one by one through these or?
To the chair.
Uh council member English, go Reyes English, go ahead.
So the last discussion we had um to schedule this meeting here today was, from what I understood. Each council member would make a selection of their top three or four, I guess. And that we would then uh come up with, I guess, the top. Two, something like this.
No, I think three, right?
We said we'll come out with the top three.
For interview?
Yes, for interview.
So uh I don't, I don't necessarily, I don't necessarily um disagree with. You know, moving forward and then having uh some response from the planning department. But um I I I'm just curious what it is that they would offer, because if it's after the fact, um. It could ultimately have uh some effects on the selections that I made, right? And then I have to go through the process again to see, you know, to vet out the others.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, so so I'm going to read my four and then maybe each council will will give us your, and then we'll figure it out if. It is a match or no match, right?
No, well, just a moment, just a moment. Are you gonna read your top four or your top?
Yes, I'm gonna read my top four.
Okay, so uh hold on, let me get a piece of paper here, so, cuz I wanna make.
Also, Von, Von, are you lis- are you listening?
Okay, so I it it looks like a.
Look, remember what the what our former uh uh interestingly managed date for the uh for the for the uh goal. That. You remember that process?
Valentine. Okay. Just a moment, council member, go ahead. Does anybody responding? Alright, let's just go ahead. Uh council member Montero, just go ahead and give us your your top.
Okay, so I have uh this uh E Jama, right?
Who who were they?
E J A M A, E Jama Planning and Development Inc.
Okay.
I have the um, they call themselves the um. Align Venture Inc.
What are they?
A L I G N D Venture Inc.
Airline Venture, okay?
Then I have HDL Companies.
HDL Companies?
Mm-hmm. And I have the uh Cannabis Public Policy Consultant.
Okay. Council, uh mayor Pro Tem, do you have anything?
I have two. I have Cannabis Public Policy Consulting and I have SCI Consulting.
S E I?
SCI Consulting.
SCI Consulting? Okay. Um. Go ahead, uh council member Patterson or council member English?
Um, yes, thank you, mayor. Hold on a moment.
You can take your time if you're still need to look, if you wanna look at anything through them, that's fine. I would just, I I would rather you do that.
Yeah.
We got a little bit of time here, um so flip through your stuff if you need to really compare anything at the last moment, okay?
I I think experience is very important and that uh, you know, some of the criteria that I think stood out for me. Um I did have a. And because I'm I'm aware here, like again, in my work history, I'm aware of how um. The city of Los Angeles uh implemented um, you know, cannabis department, so you know, that's that was, that's an everyday uh committee hearing and. And ongoing um department here in the city of Los Angeles, so I'm aware of of who they are. And some of the folks that have uh sa- similar folks that are on this list that have worked also in the city of LA, so. Um.
Take your time, take your time.
Uh I am gonna list a Wesson.
Okay, just a moment, okay?
Yes.
Wesson?
Yes. And then I'm gonna also list, again, based off of experience, this is what I'm going off of. They've uh they they've been doing it, they've been doing it here in LA. Uh HDL and uh SCI.
HDL.
And.
Listen, HDL, SCI.
Yep.
Okay, go ahead. Is that it? Um Mr. Patterson?
Um you know, for me, I'm just looking at at experience. It looks like HDL has a good amount of experience. Um looks like uh. Was it Weston and Associates?
Okay, so so you said, uh let's just, Patterson, SCI?
No, I said HDL.
HDL?
They have a good amount of experience. Um, reading that right, they're working with a number of municipalities currently.
So you're you're which HDL, right?
Yeah, I see, I'll also say Weston and Associates with the bear demographics. I'm not sure what they wanna call themselves.
One more time, HDL, Wesson?
HDL and then also uh Weston and Associates. I guess they're in partnership with Bear Demographics and Research.
So HDL and Wesson, right?
Correct.
Is that where you're at?
Yeah, I just have a question for everybody. What's everybody's opinion about, was it Cannabis Consulting Group? Looks like that they have a um. Some experience out in the desert. I notice no one mentioned them.
Um I I I said that they were um, they were very general, they didn't seem to. Um I I I said that they were um they were very general. They didn't seem to have very specific plans. To uh describe what they were going to do. I that that was my my overall impression of them. And and they they um spent a lot of time talking about social equity opportunities. But um I didn't see a lot of um depth in terms of their their program.
And the proposal doesn't seem very spectacular, but I was looking strictly at. At experience and I I just really wonder if a good idea might be to um. Check their references. Anybody that has actual experience, like so for my my thought process is to. Uh filter out anybody that doesn't have like relevant experience doing this type of work. Then those that do have some type of relevant experience, check their references to see how helpful they were. You know, people will always inflate their role in doing things. Uh somebody say, hey, I was so and so's campaign manager and all he did is give, you know, best coffee. So um this is just a thought though, right? There's a couple that does it that didn't belong the law, the office of Dominique Polley, the. Cannabis Social Equity Program Partnership that they're proposing something different than we were asking for. Um I think those are obvious ones to kind of remove and uh. You know, those are my thoughts. So you know, keep those that have some kind of relevant experience and then kind of check their uh their references.
To to the chair?
Yes, go ahead. Oh no, sorry, council member Montero, sorry, and then and then uh council member Reyes, go ahead.
Well, um just to just to follow the thought of uh of David Patterson. Uh of course, that uh that's one of the things that probably the planning uh department will do. Before we interview these finalists is to check the reference uh and even uh you know. Eventually we'll do background check in all these individuals. Uh but for example, let me tell you a little bit about, for example, the E Jama uh developer uh. Inc. They have worked in uh seat of Lindwood, City of Commerce, City of Katahe, City of Los Angeles, City of Canton, City of Bell. And and they have all the experience across the board, you know, from uh from from the. Planning to sequo, to uh to engineering, uh to social equity, uh to community outreach. And also uh they were the only one that showed uh on their budget, for example. Uh like they develop like a proposal based on, let's say, assumption that we will get twenty applicants. And then we will get six uh finalists and 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 cause recover, you know, they give us a a whole. Uh example about how the programs would be, you know, how the money would be spent. And how we can recover from each applicant, we will recover the money. So so no money would come from the general fund. So so that is where that when you look at that, so they went to a detail to show up how they consultant. How how much money we they can spend, but everything is recovered by by applicant. If for each applicant will recover the money. So we will not spend a dime from our general fund. If if, for example, if you would select this E Jama uh consultant. So they actually went went beyond the call of duty from the R F P to show us. Okay, this is how much could cost you our consultant fund, but you can recover. Uh for each applicant, this is how much you can recover from each applicant on page fourteen of the E Jama uh proposal. Okay, so and then you look at at some of these other, you know, they didn't give this that. Uh and then, you know, even uh the uh the other one that the Venture Inc., you know, it show us. Some uh a detailed budget too and give us some statistics. So.
I won't disagree. They have been very impressive uh presentation.
Yes, uh just look at, look at those, please.
So going back to, I'll I'll throw four, H C L, Wesson, E Jama and Cannabis Public Policy will be the four that I.
Just a, just a moment, uh Jama?
H D L, Wesson, E E Jama or E J A M A, excuse me, let's just say it that way.
H D L, Western, Jama, uh Cannabis Public Policy?
Yeah, those will be my four.
Okay, so I have.
Uh can I can this, can Miss English repeat her hers?
She had Wesson, H D L and S C I. Is that correct, council member?
Yes, and if I can make a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
So again, um experience is important, but I also uh liked. For instance, on the Wesson and Associates legislation. That ledge that ultimately could be implemented into our city charter. That speaks to um policy put in place that could help us. Uh to assure that we have rules and policies in place that we follow, not only the city, but the businesses.
Yeah.
And this was important too. Legislation is very important. And you know, I understand there's folks that are saying they have experience in various cities. And we're gonna, you know, verify that and research that and you know vet those out. You know, what what is that? What does that mean? How much of experience have they had in those cities? So again, experience and policy is important for me and drafting legislation. That gives us a a um. A benchmark, a benchmark and rules that we're gonna follow moving forward, but that's that was very important to me.
Okay, um so now it's my turn to uh to.
May I, may I also, may I comment on some of the other comments?
Oh, yeah, but I need to vote too and then we need to just tally the 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 votes. Can we just do that or you guys?
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Okay, H D L. Cannabis Public Policy and S C I, okay? Uh Vaughn, are you gonna take the tally? Vaughn?
Yes, I'm here.
Interim city manager, I'm sorry, uh interim city manager.
That's fine, uh yeah, I'm ready, I'm prepared.
Can you just go ahead and tally these?
Yes, uh can we repeat the the votes, please, or the the picks?
You don't have them?
I have some, but I want clarity. I have some, but let's just double check to make sure I have the right information.
Valentine has Cannabis Public Policy. She has S C I, S C I Consulting. Uh Montero has E Jama. He has Align Venture. H D L. Cannabis Public Policy. Reyes has, uh Reyes English has Wesson, H D L and S C I. Patterson has H D L, Wesson. E Jama. And Cannabis Public Policy. Vargas has Cannabis Public Policy, S C I and H D L. And and we established that we were gonna do the top three, correct?
Is that correct?
Yeah, the top three. I mean, if we're saying we're sticking to the whole stuff that we had laid out and if it was the top three we said, then let's just choose the top three, not not.
Before you tally.
Choose three, pe- three uh companies.
Everybody made their votes and now we're trying to like advocate and all this other stuff or what? I mean, did everybody make, do their research and establish or what or not? I mean, let's just go ahead and make the tally.
If our proposals are are three, we should only pick three.
Uh council member Patterson, but the thing is that the law of uh, I mean, well, actually. Uh I think, I think it looks like. What's up to you guys? But okay, I mean, just if you wanna, if you wanna remove one of the ones from your thing, just do it before he tallies.
Mr. Mayor, can you, can you let Miss Valentine speak, please?
Ca- Mayor Pro Tim Valentine, sounds like you have something to say.
Okay, so I I wanted to comment on a couple of, a couple of choices that I think we we might wanna stay away from. H D L has a bad reputation because they have been, they have been sued a lot. So we don't necessarily want to be buying a lawsuit. They do a lottery, which is not considered a good idea also. Um and that's what I wanna comment as far as H D L is concerned. As far as uh Wesson, um I love Herb Wesson, but I don't think we should involve ourselves. In a program where uh the policy, wh- where the the there is a political advocate. As a as a program, as as a as 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 a programmer for us. Because that um hi- his political ties may very well make, he he may very well make choices based on his political ties. So I think we should stay away from polit- those with political ties and I think we should stay away from H D L. That's my opinion.
To the chair, yeah, uh I agree with Miss Valentine, actually.
Council member Montero?
I do agree with Miss Valentine. Uh uh H D L, we could like, we can just say, uh you know, put it aside. Uh because they have been sued, so we don't want li- litigation. And uh Herb Wesson, the reason that I didn't pick it because like political favorite. So I uh and 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 I don't wanna, I don't want us to go on that road.
So I'm gonna pull back, I'm gonna pull back my choice for H D L. Mon- council member Montero, do you wanna pull it back?
Yes.
Okay, boss.
So I stay, I stay with the uh with the uh E Jama, uh with the Cannabis Public Policy. And the uh the Ally Venture.
Align, right? Okay, good hit.
Yeah.
Okay, final comment because we need to go to the roll call, but we can't be just going around like this forever. Council member English, do you have something?
Yes, I wanna know how uh everybody knows about lawsuits and all this. I I need, where are you guys finding this information from? And then moreover, uh we all know that uh former Speaker of the House, former Council Member Wesson. He's no longer uh in politics. He's now a consulting firm. He's retired from politics. I think how he could benefit us is just knowing the fact that he's done this in the city of Los Angeles. And they've got language and legislation that drafted the cannabis department. So that was important. Whether or not he will have political um ties, I think that's neither here or there. I think that's kind of like an unfair statement. If anything, uh i- it would help us, I believe, uh in getting it. This is a consulting. It's not, he's not, he's not a a business, okay? He's a consultant, which is basically consulting and providing us information on how to do a cannabis program. That's what the consultant's gonna be doing. I think using all this other stuff is is not necessarily fair. Um and I wanna understand, how does everybody know about this H D L? How did you arrive to that? How, what information are you receiving on that? Cuz I'm not aware of that.
I did some research.
Yeah, but you had him on your list, so all of a sudden.
Yeah, but but I have them because because the 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 proposal is is, the proposal is good. Uh you know, and and they do have some experience in in five different cities. Uh that's what I had, but you know, uh if if I understand that we try, we wanna be away from from this. The consultant that have have li- litigation, uh and that I I think is a valid point. And that's what we call compromise, right?
Um I think right now we need to stick to our choices. We're going around in circles. This is gonna, this is gonna go on forever.
Yeah, but I'm gonna have to research now. I'm gonna, I I ca- I gave you my three and that's not fair now because I have two. That there was comments made that now I have to go back and research and and make another selection, so that's not gonna help me.
Um look, so interim city manager, do you have like the, do you have the uh everything? So I'm retracting my H D L and Montero's retracting his H D L. Can you give us the top three as we have now, please?
Well, uh to the chair, let me read the the final poll to make sure it's correct and then I can give you the top three after that. So before removing H D L, I had five votes. Uh Weston, two votes. Cannabis is a republic policy. Uh four votes. E Jama, two votes. C uh S C I, three votes. Alliance Ventures, one vote.
All right, well, let's just do it with what the new, the new thing we have so that, you know, we don't start mixing up, please. Valentine Cannabis Public Policy, S C I Consulting, Montero E Jama, E Align Venture, Cannabis Public Policy. Reyes, Wesson, H D L and S C I. Patterson, H D L, Wesson, E Jama and Pub- Cannabis Public Policy. You got that one? Okay. Vargas Cannabis Public Policy and S C I. Do your pull off of this. If we keep talking, it's gonna keep going like this. Let's just end that um. And uh everybody spent time looking at these things and asking around or whatever you need to do too. It it everything counts, everything goes into the whole thing. Go ahead.
Add another one, Mayor. I'm gonna have to add another one.
Like, see, we're going on forever, guys.
Yeah, because she only said two.
No, but listen, you provided.
She said three, she gave three.
You provided four, I provided three, and then there's remarks made that they've been sued. So I don't know, I don't know this. I'm asking you, where did you guys get this information? I don't know it. So all I'm asking is for you to help me, tell me where can I find? That these people have been sued. I'd like to know that. And if that's the case, let me, let me read that. Let me just qualify them if that's true and let me be able to give you some additional names. Because I think that's really unfair that everybody's gotten, you know, four or so. I said three just based off of my research. And then now you guys are saying all this other stuff. I don't think it's fair.
Oh, look, I. We're gonna do this by, we're gonna do this by uh by uh council majority. Do we proceed forward or do we go ahead? I mean, because Mayor Pro Tim said that she wanted the the planning director to spend more time. But the thing is, we we're going around in circles here. We're adding, we're dropping. Let's just keep it to what we have and let's just go ahead and accept the the. The interim, interim city manager, do you have the poll results for the new, for the final?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead and tell us.
We have Cannabis Republic Policy with four votes. They would be the the number one candidate.
Okay.
With three votes, we have C S I.
Or S C I, yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay, that's. And then uh having two votes each, we have Weston and E E Jama.
Wes, okay, so this is a tie, Weston? Go ahead.
Miss Valentine, I think only select two, right?
Right, I only selected two.
So so you still have one pick?
Well, I I I I I did not feel as though, do I have to have another pick? I didn't feel as though the other ones were me- met what I was looking for. So I didn't pick three. I picked two.
To the chair.
Uh well, are you finished, Mayor Pro Tim?
Yep.
Patterson, go ahead. Council member.
Uh I understand how how you conducted this, but I think it probably would have been a little more fair for everybody to have a spirited discussion about all different candidates. Talk about their feelings, be able to sway and and um um. Uh lobby for whoever they they like and then then took a vote. It seemed like there was a vote given and then information provided second. Um which I think should have been other way around.
Well, yeah, um I agree, but we took this route and then nobody stopped it in the process before we got this. I actually agreed with you in the beginning, but nobody, but we're here now. Um so no, thank you. Reiterating what I meant, what we both saying.
We can still make it. We can do whatever we wanna do.
Well, yeah, but you know, we just, everything's, okay, so there's Cannabis Public Policy, S C I. Wesson and E Jama. How how does the council wish to proceed to break the tie between Wesson?
Just move forward with those four.
What's the rest of the council? Montero, Valentine?
Well, but but uh uh hold on one second because if if you go that way, you know, well. Because then you would uh uh H D L would still have to be, uh uh still would have to play. Because they have, e- even if I took my vote out and you took your vote, they still have to vote.
Is that correct? Is that correct, uh Mr. City Manager?
I actually had.
Yeah, exactly, because because the thing is, we could invite these, all of them to come for interview and then we can ask question. Uh our concern.
I would love to ask them if they've been sued, absolutely.
Okay, so so.
I think there's only two that's our obvious disqualifications and the rest is kind.
And the rest is kinda.
In in this case, you know, we would have uh one, two, three, four, five applicants for finalists to come for interview.
Sounds good to me.
And and then uh and then we'll have the planning department to do the due intelligence on these five. And then from there, we'll we'll, we will go all of them for interview, so we can ask tough questions. So then we don't, then we don't discriminate about nobody.
Comments from uh uh Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Reyes English, anything?
No, I have no further comments.
Are are you guys okay with uh proceeding as suggested?
And you're you're to the chair?
Yes, yes, Councilmember Reyes.
You're saying uh five, and we're gonna bring them in, and we're gonna have uh uh an ability to uh. Question their uh their abilities, right?
Correct, so so basically what I'm saying, so we're gonna bring uh uh S C I. H D L, E Jama, uh public policy and Urban Western.
Um so at the end, okay, so then I'm.
That's my motion.
Now, hold on, hold on, hold on, so after that. What are, what is going to be our objective when we bring them? Choose the top one or two, and then just do a tiebreaker? Because we didn't, do we wanna do it in a in two iterations to get the final?
Uh we should probably come up with a process that how we're gonna vote for each one. And then who had the top. Score will be the finalist.
The finalist, the 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 choice.
Yeah, the choice, exactly, so we should come up with a score.
So you guys wanna go from the five to one, is that, is that the suggestion?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Something like that, yes, so we can.
I think we should go from five to three to one.
So we can score them.
I actually. Man. I would like to go from five to three to one or five to two to one. Because I think uh we need to be very critical of this, and I think with this, with with those stages. With a staged process, we're going to be very, uh we'll be able to do our due diligence when it comes to that. Any comment from my councilmember colleagues, Mayor Pro Tem?
To the chair.
Councilmember Reyes, go ahead.
Yes, you wanna go ahead, Councilmember Valentine?
Yes, no, I I what what are you saying, Mayor, uh five to one?
Well, this is, this is uh. Jumping on what uh Councilmember Patterson said. Is that I I kinda feel that we should go from a five to three to one, or a five to two to one. Uh stage, so that we can just repetitively whittle through these and be as. Critical of them as possible, so that we can get to the top choice.
I would agree, I would say five to two to one.
Okay, I I I would like to suggest five to two to one, are you okay with that, Councilmember Patterson, Councilmember Reyes English gets to talk to it.
Yes, thank you, I prefer five to three, since initially we asked to pick three. I prefer five to three to one. And that's because at the very beginning, we all agreed that it would be the top three. So we're changing it up as we go, and that's not fair, so I would say five to three to one.
Then then why don't we just stick to the, let's choose the top three?
Oh my god, don't don't go back, don't go back, because you already agree on this five, so I would concur with.
I didn't agree on these five.
I would concur with the with Miss English to go five, three to one.
Councilmember Patterson? Five to two to one or five, three to one, what do you want?
Uh I I say five to three to one.
Okay. Five, three to one, that's fine, I mean, we're still going through a critical process, I just wanted to get to the answer. Quicker, I feel, but that's fine, five, three to one. Okay, that's fine, it was just an opinion, whether it's three to two, three or two, that's fine. Five, three to one.
For the chair, do we have a motion to accept that?
So.
I move.
I second.
Can can, let's let repeat what those were, those were cannabis public policy, S C I, Wesson, E Jama and H D L, is that correct?
Yeah, five of them.
Okay.
And then we're gonna go from five, three to one.
Alright.
Uh should we start the next meeting?
Okay.
And and please, uh uh the to the to the planning director and even um. Our interim city attorney, if you guy and and Vaughn, if you guys can work together, right? Uh to make sure that you guys try to come, you know, vent some of these applicants, see if we can find anything, you can bring it to us. And Greg, if you can read it or ask Art to help you, right? And then you, because uh I'm gonna ask for you guys to give you. Your expert opinion on what you think, okay?
Um but it is duly noted that in order, the tie was between West and E Jama and H D L. And the top two were actually cannabis public. Policy and S C I.
Correct.
I I would like to highlight that as a result of today's meeting, okay?
Yeah, that's that's correct.
You know what I'm saying, just so that people know that for the record, that's the way it laid out today. Okay. I second the motion? Or no, it's been seconded by Councilmember Patterson, is that correct? Okay, motion, motion, the motion was made by uh.
Montero.
Uh Councilmember Montero, and it was seconded by Councilmember Patterson. Uh. A roll call vote, please? Diana? Alright, uh.
Yeah, I'm here.
Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Okay, and Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Okay, alright, uh guys, um so let's try to make sure we stick to whatever protocol we've laid out. Um it didn't get out, it didn't get to um. We didn't veer too far off of the spirit of what we wanted to do today, but let's just try to. Stick to it, does that sound good?
Yeah, uh what about the next meeting, next meeting?
Next meeting, yes.
Uh Greg, Greg have a hands up? Mister Mayor, Greg.
Greg.
Uh yes, just just for some clarification, for the grading criteria. Is the council fine with the six points that were identified in the R F P? Uh and if so, would you like me to set up a grading sheet? That evenly disperses the six, or do you put more weight on one or the other?
Man, that's a. That's a, that's a good question.
Great question, I don't have to ask for you. Like anything I would say would be just as. Off the top of my head without putting enough thought into it.
Would you like to suggest one soon before we go in, or just right now? Because see, we wanna think about that.
This is a question, we should think about it.
We can't make, we can't make a call right now on that, or does anybody else have any comment on what I just said and what Councilmember Patterson said?
Well, uh if if we go, if we go uh uh with a six point from the R F P, and then uh maybe Greg, if you can look. Which area is so critical to us? Then maybe you can give a a greater value to that section, right? Those that that uh that has, uh that's not too significant to us, maybe give them a lower value, right? Let's say, for example, if we want experience, so experience will got, I don't know, five point, whatever. If we, if you know, some other, you know, uh zoning or something, they'll got a three, because you guys are an expert on zoning, right? So so those kinda, just frame it that way.
Um yeah, Councilmember.
Did you remind me what those six points are?
Uh yes, Councilman, they are organization slash management experience. Experience working with public agencies. Similar and recent related services provided in the past. Overall scope of work understanding. Professional communication skills, which you'll evaluate during your interviews. And cost.
Uh one of the things I wanted to mention, thank you. Um the simple years of experience is not enough for me, it's quality years of equality of experience. Because somebody can have ten years of. Uh excuse my French, ten years of experience, and they can have twenty cities that they've operated in. But they can have ten years of experience in twenty cities that they've screwed things up in.
Uh but but Mister Mayor.
But, no, I mean, hold on, hold on.
Cannabis seeds have not been in ten years.
Counselmember, Councilmember Montero.
California have not, because I don't wanna left them ten years.
That's fine, I appreciate the comment, but it's the. Quality of experience too, not just the years, I I wouldn't, I'm just telling you what, I'm just. Throwing that out there, just so you guys can keep that in mind too, from my perspective. It's not just the years and how many. I mean, that could be nice and impressive, but there could be some players out there that might not have. That many cities and that many years, and they might be the best, and they might be straight up, straight up what we need. Okay, are we finished or what's up?
Uh but Mister Mayor, uh 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 just a a quick comment, but what I would ask for all of you is to go back. And read the proposal carefully. And look at the R F P and read it, uh and don't just scan it, okay? So read, because some of these proposals have detailed information. So so go back and read it, please.
Excellent, okay, so um real quick question, uh council colleagues. The next meeting that we have, and that we're gonna schedule right now, we're going to do it. Um. Like we did today with the council solely, so that we can review, and then finally choose the top three, correct? And then interview the last, the three finalists, correct?
Yes.
Oh, I mean, I would be fine with interviewing the five.
I mean, look, we're gonna.
Yeah, I thought we were going to interview all of them, five of them.
In person, you guys, is that what you guys wanna do?
That's what I thought we were going to do.
Five in Zoom, Zoom, five.
Zoom, yeah.
At what point do we have our private discussion? I I don't wanna have a private discussion, my discussion. When they're like right there staring at us, I would like to have a different session. Either a different session or a different portion of the meeting where we talk about them.
But Mister Mayor, this is a public meeting, even if we had a meeting, they can log in, they can listen.
No, of course, of course, but. All the comments and I would like to discuss after we interview them, like with the final section within the meeting itself. After we hear from them, is what I'm saying. So we can have this, this type of discussion like we had today. To choose the top three.
Okay, so no, wait, hold on one second, so what about you?
It's fine, but I would still like to allow them to present.
Yeah, but but you know what I'm saying, Councilmember Patterson?
What about, what about?
Themselves, we can discuss amongst each other.
Yeah, that's it.
What about if 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 Greg and with with and and our interim city, city attorney and city manager gave us a memo? Of of uh on for on each candidate, right? Uh without us having a meeting, and then we interview. Or five or three, whatever your pleasure is.
Why are we change, why are we changing it up again?
Look, 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 Councilmember, Councilmember colleagues, all I'm telling you is that if the wish of the council is to have these people come in. The five, right, no, but listen, 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 listen real quick, please.
With five?
That we, that they come in, they talk to us, we ask them questions, et cetera, and then.
You could do a, yeah, you could do a closed session after we um.
Well, not closed session, but like an open discussion, because it's a, we have to do it just like we're doing it right now.
No, I understand, we could do an, we could do an open discussion, and then you said.
At the end.
Yeah, at the end, you would like to be able to discuss it among the council members. And we could ask our interim city attorney whether or not we could take a closed session. To to discuss the five, and then ultimately report out on the selection of the three. And then et cetera, et cetera, but you have to start with what we said we were gonna do.
Yeah, no, because we're changing it too much, no, that's all I'm saying, I would like to have a separate portion at the end of the meeting, where we talk just like we are today.
I agree.
And then then you can come up with every counterpoints you want to, and whatever thing you researched or whatever.
That sounds like.
But but the test the two, uh I don't think we can have a closed session on this matter.
Ask, get the.
That's fine. Whatever it is, is what it's gonna be.
But how about be an open session?
Real quick question, this this so that we can make, okay, look. I'm gonna put it straight out there. I don't know if anybody has their favorites or they don't. Do we want to have a set? Set questions that we're going to ask all five? Or do we wanna randomly ask questions? Right?
Randomly.
What's what's the preference of our council?
Yeah, I should be randomly. And and I said, I need to interview the five, so now we go like you said, the five, three to one.
Okay, that's fine, I mean, doesn't say it's either way is wrong or right or wrong, I'm just.
We already voted on it. We already voted on that motion, Mister Mayor.
Yeah, but the, we didn't.
We already voted on it.
But we didn't specify what kind of questions we were going to ask, if it was gonna be random.
No, I'm not talking about question, I'm talking about that, we voted that we're going to bring five coun- five applicant for for interviews. And and we then we were going from five, three to one.
Exactly, we we already know that, we re-stated it.
On that.
We restated that many times, but I'm getting the logistics of the meeting that we're going to have laid out. Because once we go into the meeting.
Random questions.
It's going to be mayhem if we don't establish this today, when we go in there and everybody keeps changing the way we're going, just like we did today. We changed like two or three different things today.
Yeah, to the chair.
Let's just keep it orderly, and we need to clarify this stuff. And uh we just go into it ready, knowing what we need to do, and let's not change it around once we're there.
To the chair, um.
Go ahead.
I have a suggestion, if uh each council member prepares two to three questions. Uh and have those prepared to to ask those individuals that you're vetting. So we can stay on task and uh be prepared for the interviews that are coming up. That would be my my recommendation.
I feel we're all in alignment at this point, so uh we'll, everything's been laid out, so if you guys are ready, we can just close the meeting and just establish the meeting date. We're in alignment, I believe, so. Meeting date, guys, can we establish that, just so we can keep moving forward?
Sure, two weeks, one week.
Can we go next week, maybe the fifth or the sixth of May?
Oh, uh let's ask Greg if he has, if it's enough time for him.
Uh I I, if I get cooperation from the consultants, uh and their references. Um I think the the six would be fine, um.
For the thirteen?
Yeah, I would say that, let's try the thirteen at three o'clock.
I'm good with that.
Okay, the the six or the thirteen?
Thirteen.
For more time.
Yes.
That's fine.
I'm sorry, I have a meeting that day, right at, right at three o'clock.
Oh my goodness, I do too, I'm sorry, I have a meeting too, I'm actually part of that, I think. So on the twelfth or the fourteenth?
I'll choose the twelve.
I could do the twelve at three o'clock.
Okay, twelve at two, three?
Yeah.
Yeah, I sure like to meet a lot.
Uh what is it, so okay. At three o'clock?
Yeah.
I don't have any conflicts. Patterson?
Yeah, that's fine, thank you.
I'm reviewing my calendar, hold on. Uh yeah, I think the twelfth at three o'clock is okay.
Okay, um Wednesday, May twelve, three o'clock. Okay, Councilmember colleagues, any further comments? If not, this meeting is adjourned.